I'm going to call to order the March 20th, 2018 Public Hearing to consider legislative text amendment to Clackamas County's comprehensive plans and zoning and development ordinance to implement Phase Four, the Zoning and Development Ordinance Audit, which by the way has been taking years. Thanks to marijuana. Before we, and it's not because we're using it, because we've had a lot of hearings, just to clarify. Before we begin, I'd invite you to rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we will consider ZDO 266, a legislative text amendment that primarily addresses development standards, exceptions, and special uses in the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and zoning and development ordinance. The hearing on ZDO 266 will proceed as the following. First, here are presentation from Principal Plantifer, uh, Plantifer. I was thinking of your last, your name. Planner Jennifer Hughes. Next, I'll open the hearing for public testimony, beginning with public officials who will have five minutes each, then representatives from recognized community planning organizations and agencies will have three minutes each. Finally, other people wishing to testify will have three minutes each. The Board will then deliberate and either render a decision today or set a time to make a decision at a later date. We'll now begin with Principal Plantifer.
It's just going to be permanent now, I think.
I got some.
Is that a word, Plantifer?
Plantifer.
I think so. We could coin it, maybe.
That's your new name.
Okay. Good morning. So yes, we are here to talk about Phase Four of the Audit of the Zoning and Development Ordinance. I know the Board is very familiar with this background information, but for the audience and for people watching on television, I do just want to spend a few minutes talking about what this sort of overall project is. The ZDO is the county's ordinance that regulates zoning and development in unincorporated Clackamas County. It is intended to implement the county's comprehensive plan. The ZDO was actually adopted initially in 1980 and actually has its roots in an ordinance that was adopted in 1960. And the 1980 version has been amended more than 200 times since 1980. So as you can imagine, when you're making, you know, that number of amendments, you can end up with some inconsistencies with, you know, potentially a longer code than you really intended to have when you started out. So the goal of the audit is to streamline and clarify the ZDO. We are looking to repeal redundant or conflicting regulations, to reorganize the code so that it's easier for the public and for staff to use and understand. We are also intending to ensure consistency with state and regional laws. For the most part, our code is consistent, but occasionally we will find some small things that need to be adjusted for consistency. And then we are considering some amendments to policies on uses and development standards. You know, there hasn't tended to be wholesale policy changes, but in some cases, there are substantive issues that have come up that we have asked you to weigh in on. The schedule for the ZDO audit, as Chair Bernard alluded to, this project has taken years and it's taken longer than what we would have originally hoped. This was envisioned as a five-year project, and I think it really will be a five-year project. It's just that we took about two years out in the middle and focused on some other really time-sensitive priorities that the county had. Adoption of our marijuana regulations and then some amendments to those. The disincorporation of Damascus, that required us to apply our code to that area. And then most recently, the transitional shelter communities for, for the homeless vets. The project that you've got going in the industrial area, that required some code amendments as well. So now we are back at work and we are in what I'm now calling Phase Four, which is, as you see there, is that 2017-18, focusing on special use requirements, exceptions, and development standards. And the package today is the first of two planned phases, so I would expect that you will see me again in the summer to wrap up the second phase. And then next fiscal year will be what we certainly hope is the final year of the ZDO audit, again with probably two amendment packages to wrap things up. So Audit Phase Four, just in general, as, as I'm sure the Board noted, your packet for today's hearing was quite lengthy. The reason for that is that we are actually making amendments to 50 different sections of the zoning and development ordinance and some relatively minor edits to four chapters of the comprehensive plan. The overarching goals of the audit really are consistent with this proposal today in that I think of all of the four phases, this is probably the one that has stuck closest to just a lot of housekeeping, a lot of cleanup. So it creates a lot of paper, but not a lot of real substantive changes that have far-reaching implications for, for the county. We are continuing to reorganize the code for clarity and ease of use, continuing to consolidate permitted uses in tables, which our staff and I think the public have found to be much more accessible than what used to be just long lists of texts that they had to navigate. Some minor changes for consistency with state and regional law in this package and just a lot of streamlining, trying to repeal obsolete and redundant things and really try to organize information so we put like things together as much as possible. So even though the changes to the comprehensive plan are, in my opinion, relatively minor, I do want to highlight those because it is our comprehensive plan. It is our policy document that we base our code on. So there is a proposal to repeal one policy, one land use policy related. It's kind of obscure and the reason that it's being repealed is because we thought it should be repealed from the zoning ordinance and then I found out, oh, look, there's an actual comp plan policy that says the same thing. And it's just odd because it only applies in one zone and we don't know how to apply it and it relates to trucks accessing office commercial areas. So that would be repealed. There's a couple of outdated roadway policies that are proposed for repeal out of Chapter Six because those issues are addressed in our transportation system plan in Chapter Five. Proposing to correct an error that I'm sure is my fault from 2015, where we inadvertently changed a policy related to residential density in government camp. We're proposing to repeal a policy on prohibited street trees and the Sunnyside Corridor Community Plan, and that's for consistency with a proposal in the ZDO that I'll talk about in a minute. And then two changes to our procedural policies in Chapter 11 for consistency with some ZDO provisions and state law. In terms of ZDO changes, some definition changes to our solar energy system definition, and there is a substantive result from changing that definition, which is that rooftop solar systems, solar energy systems that are allowed as an accessory use will be able to generate extra, you know, feed back into the grid. Our code right now just says you can only generate what you use on site, but we thought that was probably unnecessarily restrictive. So if you're able to do a roof-mounted system on your home or on a commercial building and feed back into the grid, you could do that without a conditional use permit. If you're going to do some sort of ground-mounted solar facility, as I know the Board has considered recently, this does not change that. Those would still need a conditional use permit. Or in some cases, a goal exception if they're on farmland. We are proposing a change to the lot coverage definition. It's really just a cleanup, but what it will do is uniformly treat swimming pools as being exempt from lot coverage. That's only the case in some zones now. It's inconsistent, so this would broadly apply. And then finally, in terms of just sort of process, we are proposing to repeal some technical plating standards that pertain to partitions and subdivisions. The Board has already acted to put those technical standards into the surveyors chapter of the county code, and so this is to sync that up. In terms of changes to the underlying zoning districts, we are proposing what I would call targeted changes to some of our dimensional standards, so lot coverage setbacks, lot size. By targeted, I mean there's no wholesale changes proposed. It's where we went through and found kind of just narrow situations where there's this inconsistency. Why does this work this way in this one particular situation? It should be more uniform. There's really no justification for that, that distinction. And then parking structures in government camp are only allowed with the approval of a community parking plan, and the code actually doesn't specify who would have to approve that, and so it's specifying the Board. There's no effort at the moment that I'm aware of to do that in government camp, but the code would require it if they wanted to develop a parking structure. So one of the key areas that we're covering in this phase of the audit are special uses, and we're only doing some of those at this point. The rest will be contained in the next phase. But some of the ones that we are proposing changes to relate to auto wrecking yards and junkyards, service stations, and attached single-family dwellings. In the wrecking yards and junkyards, we're proposing to repeal some standards that we see as fairly arbitrary regarding side dimensional standards because it's a conditional use permit. We can regulate that anyway through the conditional use process. And we are proposing some upgraded standards for fencing for those. There was some inconsistency that didn't make a lot of sense. The service station chapter, we're proposing to repeal. That was actually adopted in the 60s, I was able to find out, and has hardly changed since then. And really, it's become obsolete because we have so many other standards that apply to commercial development. And finally, the attached single-family dwelling section, most of those standards will just be moved to, to other sections of the code. With regard to exceptions, so our code has standards that deal with sort of general exceptions to dimensional standards, certain things that don't have to meet setback requirements or lot coverage requirements or building height. So this is a proposal that staff is making because this has been an ongoing issue over the years that sort of comes up, and it's this question about mechanical units. So like an air conditioner, condenser, or heat pump. We have, I think, been probably inconsistent in terms of whether we have or have not required setbacks for those over the years. The code is not explicit. So staff was proposing that we adopt an explicit side and rear yard setback, except exemption, excuse me, for those mechanical units for residential. So that is a, it's a substantive change, which is why I'm highlighting it. And certainly, if you have questions or want to talk about that, happy to do that at the, at the end. Development standards is the third major category that we're dealing with with this phase. So we're looking at our site and building design standards, roads and connectivity, storm drainage, landscaping, open space and parks. The changes are relatively minor. We are proposing to repeal the storm drainage section and move some of the provisions to a different part of the code and just repeal some of them altogether because they are obsolete in an era where we have service districts that are applying our surface water management standards now, or they're being applied through the county's engineering department under the roadway standards. Again, with development standards, we are doing a lot of cleanup in our lot size and density section, which spills over into our planned unit development section and repealing design standards for land divisions. Just trying to consolidate, it's, it's relatively difficult to determine in some cases, particularly in the urban area, what lot size applies to subdivisions and partitions because the provisions are scattered and how those lot sizes relate to the number of units that you can get. So that comes up a lot in urban subdivisions, and I think it's been difficult in some cases for our community planning organizations to, you know, really sort of access that information so they can weigh in meaningfully. So this is really an attempt to consolidate those provisions as much as possible to make it easier to understand, but no changes in terms of the density that is permitted on a site. Looking at our parking and loading standards and proposing to repeal the solar access permit section, it was adopted in the 80s. It's never been used and it is questionably, it's questionable whether it would really pass legal muster, so the proposal there is to repeal that. Finally, I just want to focus on what we've done to respond to particular input that we've gotten, either as part of this project or that we've received, kind of, you know, it's been on Jennifer's list of things to look at when we review the code. First one would allow new churches as a conditional use permit in several of the county's multifamily zones. Currently, churches are a conditional use in most residential districts, both lower density and higher density zones than these, and this is just sort of a hole. I'm not sure why, in terms of where they're permitted. We do have a particular church that's interested in an expansion that they are not eligible for under the current code. This would allow them to proceed with a conditional use permit, does not guarantee approval. They still have to meet the conditional use criteria, but it at least opens the door and of course would apply to other churches as well in those districts. Second one is repealing the minimum site area standards in about a half a dozen of the county's multifamily and commercial zones. These standards have been around for several decades and were intended to force lot consolidation. So it's really not about whether you can divide your property, but it's about whether you can develop an existing lot that's legal, but is less than the minimum site area size. And so the idea was to cause lots to be aggregated with a theory being that you would get a better development product if that happened. We have seen some of that, but not a lot of that over the years. And so particularly in the HDR, the high-density residential zone, there are still a number of undersized lots that have never consolidated that have maybe just a single-family dwelling on them. And we have one in particular where there's no development possible on there currently. It is vacant and they cannot develop without acquiring adjacent property. So it has put them in a very difficult position and staff would recommend, not just for that case, but for other similar situations, that we should repeal those standards. There are still a number of requirements that would apply to developing the property, parking, landscaping, building design, et cetera, but there simply wouldn't be a minimum site area standard. And the third one, allowing exceptions to the commercial industrial maximum building size standards in rural areas. This was an item that the Board put on the Planning Department's work program last year when you approved our work program for the current fiscal year. And what it applies to is the state law requires a maximum size for commercial and industrial buildings in rural areas, in rural communities. So places like Roda Dendron, Malino, Beaver Creek, those rural communities, there's a cap. For the most part, it's 4,000 square feet, 8,000 square feet in government camp for commercial industrial buildings can be much larger, but there are exceptions in state law to that standard. And so in particular, in the commercial zones, you can exceed that square footage if you can demonstrate that your use is going to serve either tourists, you know, people passing through the area, or people who live in the rural community. So you're not just drawing people from the urban area out on a Saturday afternoon to shop specifically at that store, but that it's serving people passing through the area or living there. So that is the proposal, and it would then allow, there is no cap at that point. If they can meet that standard, the building could be as large as they could, you know, sort of fit on a commercial or industrial site in those areas. And then these are, this is, these are responding to input that we got from other departments. Some of this is cleanup to sync up with things that have already happened through other divisions, so the Sunnyside Village Park fees. The North, you've already acted as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board to change the way park fees are collected in Sunnyside Village, and that's because all the Sunnyside Village parks have been built. So these provisions were obsolete, and so we're proposing that then we make a corresponding change to the zoning ordinance. Repealing the prohibited street tree list and the calculation methodology for the fee in lieu of improvement that applies to certain road improvements. These changes were requested by Transportation Engineering because they have their own vegetation list that's more modern, that's been adopted in terms of what can be planted in the right-of-way, and because the Board has previously acted to adopt the fee in lieu of improvement fees into the county code fee table. Transportation Engineering also recommended some changes to parking lot design. This does not reduce parking requirements. It does not impose a new requirement for parking spaces either, but what it does do is allow developers the flexibility of having some larger parking spaces if they would like to. Our current code requires that all spaces essentially be what would amount to compact. And so this would allow them to have some larger spaces. We have had some concerns with folks with disabilities trying to access these parking spaces, people with car seats that they're trying to get in and out, and just, you know, larger vehicles in general, excuse me, in general. So it would allow more flexibility. And finally, responding to prior cases, so we have had some cases, some land use cases that have drawn attention to some problems with the code, and we're proposing to clean three of those up. One would amend our definition of home occupation to remove the clearly subordinate to the residential use of the subject property standard. That's in the definition. It's not explicitly listed as a standard in our home occupation code, and the way that staff has applied that over the years is if you meet all the standards. So we have standards for, you know, how many traffic trips you can generate, how many employees you can have, how big your building can be for your business, for your home business, noise standards, sign standards. If you meet all those, it's deemed to be an allowed accessory, an allowed accessory use. But we had a case where the court said, I can't remember actually if it was Luba or the Court of Appeals, where Land Use Board of Appeals said, you know, this really looks like it's a separate standard, and I believe they remanded it to the county. And so we're kind of in a situation now where we're thinking, maybe we're supposed to be applying that and we don't quite know how we would do that in the context of a home occupation permit. It would make it fairly difficult for us to guide applicants in terms of whether their proposal would or would not meet the standard. So we're proposing to repeal that and just keep all the specific standards that we have for home businesses. Correct a procedural discrepancy for review of historic landmark moving or demolition. Right now, the code says it's one type of application, a type two in one place, and a type three in another. It was always intended to be a type two. The type three was a typo from a couple of years ago, so we would like to revert that back to being a type two review. And then finally, our adult business standards that have been in the code since the early 80s were found to be unconstitutional also in the early 80s and are disconnected from the code now anyway, so that even if the Constitution were changed, we couldn't apply them without legislative action on the part of the Board. So we would simply like to remove those from the ZDO. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
I, so the ones, I make a few notes here. Start with the AC units. I've heard in some issues with access because of people trying to walk around it, taking up that five feet or not having a safe access to it, and concerns about accessing in the case of a fire, being able to get around the building. So I think that that's something that we ought to tackle. So how's it written now? Does it allow it or what modifications have been made?
In the current draft or the, or the code that's effective now?
Current draft.
Okay, so the current draft just says they're exempt. So mechanical units, and then it gives some examples, air conditioner, condensers, heat pumps, would be exempt from side and rear yard setbacks if the unit is accessory to a residential, to a dwelling. And that's it. There's no standards beyond that.
So from some of our people that might be concerned about that, whether it's the firefighters or public safety access or residences or the builders association, do we have any idea? Have they weighed in on that aspect?
No. So we do have other, other structures under the code currently that are exempt that could pose, I suppose, similar concerns. And I think staff was thinking, well, it's sort of similar. In urban areas, for instance, urban residential areas, you can have an outbuilding, like a small shed of a certain size, and off the top of my head, it's something like 100 square feet and eight feet tall, I believe, that doesn't have to have a setback. And that's been in the code at least as long as I've been working at the county, so 25 years or so. So I think from our perspective, it'd be a similar issue. Not saying it's not a concern, but I think when we were thinking about this, that we thought, well, it's sort of like that. We'll just sort of propose to treat them the same way explicitly. But in rural areas, there are no setbacks, side yard setback exceptions for outbuildings. So this would be new, you know, for those zones. We haven't done any discussion with, say, fire.
I don't have any concerns with the, with the accessory buildings, but where you're down the five feet, just the safety of one walking, traveling in that little stretch alongside their homes has been. And there's also a noise issue, I hear from some as well.
Yes.
So that's something I've got an interest in, trying to find a remedy for that as opposed to just flat out exempting them.
Right. And there's no, I mean, just to be clear, this was something staff was proposing just because it was sort of on the list of questions that have come up over the years. You're under no obligation to act on that today. If you wanted to remove that from the package, we could bring it back at a later point. There's not an urgency, I guess, to that issue.
Okay.
Or you could just restrict it or exempt it on the side yard or backyard, right?
Sure.
You want to, isn't that what you would like to do, exempt it from the backyard?
Well, I think that if, if, I think the main concern probably if, from a noise standpoint, would be right up to the property line. From a, from an access standpoint, it'd be probably in that area where it's five feet, you know, limited, where there's another property. But obviously, it would seem to me that if there was a restriction, not that I, now that I think about it, maybe I'm not necessarily proposing that, but if there was a restriction that they couldn't put it right on the property line, that obviously they'd be inclined to put it right next to the, the structure, right, the home, which seems logical. If you had a 20-foot setback, you wouldn't want to use, put the AC condenser 20 feet away, right?
Yeah, I think it's a side yard normally that depends.
It's usually typically as close to the home as possible from an engineering standpoint.
Right.
So they would probably be more inclined to put it where, you know, away from those restricted areas.
Right.
Probably in the backyard.
Yeah, I think the only caution today would be if you were proposing to explicitly apply a setback, you know, whatever it is, if you thought three feet was adequate, then I don't think we would want to do that today because the notice did not express that. So I think for today, you either exempt or side, rear, or both, or just remove it. But if you want us to explore doing something different, we should do that as part of a later, a later package.
I'd be inclined just to remove it and then let's deal with it and hear from everyone as best we can. Okay. That might be the easiest thing to do?
I'm fine with that. Yeah, that's good.
Just, I really appreciate the history from the 1960s to the 1980s to now. So I just have a few big picture questions. I'm curious, we have some policy goals that we've expressed as a commission. We want to reduce carbon footprint as a county government and encourage local jurisdictions, our cities and our residents to do the same. And also, we are in the crunch of a housing affordability challenge and looking at how, what are we going to be doing to help facilitate housing affordability? So we're going to be pulling together developers and different stakeholders to have a conversation. And so I'm just curious in that, and I don't know how much you can provide, but as you've gone through this, and it's been quite an extensive process of reviewing what currently exists, sort of gleaning through, well, what do we need to get rid of? What do we need to enhance? It's been quite the process. I'm just curious, with those two policy objectives, did those play into the review at all, or did we hear from stakeholders talking about how we're reducing our carbon footprint, how we're facilitating housing affordability, the bigger picture and how we're looking at our ZDO?
So the code audit has not been that type of exercise. Not saying that would not have had, you know, had its place or been a good approach, but that wasn't the way the project was designed. So it really has not been, we didn't have a stakeholder committee. It's been done internally, essentially just with our knowledge about what hasn't worked with the code, the confusion that has come up, you know, just in our sort of day-to-day work. And it's been approached largely from that perspective of cleanup as opposed to what could we do to, you know, facilitate affordable housing or to reduce our climate footprint? I will tell you the one thing that came to mind, you know, the parking that I mentioned, the change on the parking, right? There was a package of amendments done in 2011, what was specifically a sustainability package. And it did go through our code and look at it from that perspective of what could we do to be more sustainable? And we made a number of changes, nearly all of which are still in place. The change to parking, though, is a reversal. So at that time, we went, you know, previously, we had allowed a certain percentage of compact parking spaces. We didn't require it, but we allowed it. We sort of flipped that on its head and said parking spaces in most cases, there are some exceptions, but in most cases shall not be larger than X. So it was a real reversal. This is pulling that back somewhat, truthfully. So it's, you know, you would still, we would still have a mandatory 25% of the spaces would be this smaller size, but that they could have the larger ones if they wanted to. And that is based on input we've gotten about sort of what the practicality has been of those standards. And I think, you know, I felt like Transportation Engineering had some pretty compelling examples, even though I understand it's more paved surface.
And then how, so we're the county, and this is affecting all of our unincorporated areas, and we have 15 cities that have their own zoning ordinances. I'm just curious, how do we compare generally? If you could just comment on that, or do we take the lead in setting standards with our cities? Do we get ideas from them? How, what's the interplay between our different jurisdictions?
So there's, for most projects, there's not a lot of formal interplay. We as a staff certainly do look at other zoning codes in the local area when we're looking for ideas. So, you know, what, we might survey and get on the web and look at three or four different, you know, just pick some stand, I mean, that's very routine. What, you know, what is Washington County doing? What is the city of Portland doing? What is Wilsonville doing? And we have done that for certain projects, absolutely, to get ideas. I know that they have done, you know, we certainly, for example, our marijuana regulations were a model. were a model for some other counties when they were adopting their standards. So I think it does work both ways, but it tends to be a little more informal as opposed to we're actually, you know, getting together in some sort of collaborative format to talk about those things. The other thing, of course, is the regulations that we have that are regional requirements or state requirements, then there is a lot of uniformity in terms of what's going on with different jurisdictions because Metro is setting those standards, or the state of Oregon is setting those standards, but I think the rest is fairly informal.
Is there an organization that facilitates a best practice for jurisdictions when it comes to zoning?
So there are professional organizations, certainly. The American Planning Association, there's an Oregon chapter of that, you know, so yes, there are professional associations that have publications, and occasionally the state has published, I mean, they have like a model code for small cities, and will occasionally do model codes for other purposes. Thank you. You're welcome.
Well, I just want to add that probably five years ago, I was more involved in sitting down and talking about where we're going, and then marijuana came along, and now in my position, I probably wouldn't have as much time to do that, but, you know, cities, for example, city of Milwaukee downtown zones, might look at parking, number of parking reductions, environmental standards meeting certain codes, solar, other areas like that, which is something we'll be looking at probably when we do the McLaughlin area, we'll be looking at various parking standards and stuff, but this is just kind of overall. And a lot of it is, you know, when somebody comes in the office and, and they, they want to do something, it's often very complicated. Maybe it's gray, or, or a new person sitting at the desk opens up the book and asks to go through all this and try to figure out what to tell the person, but I think that when you look at your presentation, what we really did is, I thought there were some key words, and that's reorganize, consolidate, consistency, streamline, correct errors, and repeal. All those things really is what, that's what we did here. So it's, while it's still huge and going to get bigger, it does all those things, and I think that's, that was the goal, and we're, we're getting close to achieving that. Another year, we will achieve that. So, anyway, anything additional? All right, so move on. We'll now open the public comment portion of the hearing. I have to read all this. Are there any public officials wishing to testify? No. Are there any representative CPOs or agencies wishing to testify? No. We'll now hear testimony from members of public who wish to testify and allow three minutes, so please give your name, and I've already got one card, and if you represent somebody or your, your general area of address. So Mike Connors.
Thank you for coming today amongst the crowd.
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Mike Connors at the law firm Hathaway Larson. Address is 1331 Northwest Lovejoy Street, Portland, Oregon 97204. I'm here on behalf of Embra Asset Group and Dollar General, and we're here to testify in support of the proposed amendments to Section 513. These are the amendments that incorporate the state law exceptions to the size restrictions on commercial and industrial uses in rural commercial areas. A little brief history, I think Jennifer did a really good job of sort of describing the issue, and that is that state law imposes these restrictions, 4,000, 8,000, depending on your particular location, but it allows for certain exceptions. And in 2000, prior to 2015, the county code had similar size restrictions, and it allowed for exceptions, but the exceptions were different. It was more like a variance process as opposed to the exceptions that were recognized and incorporated in the state law. And so in 2015, when you're going through the audit process, there was a proposal to amend the provisions to make it consistent with state law, and the commission at the time decided to table that because there was some discussion about wanting to look further into it, and the, the idea and directive was to table it to the following year when the assumption would be that the next round of audits would come the following year. Well, as you noticed, or as you noted already, you know, the marijuana and Damascus issues sort of sucked up all the time for the county, and so when this audit process came around, my client was one of the parties that asked the county to include this in this part of the phase of the audit, and we really appreciate the commission being willing to do that as well as staff. We understand you have a lot of issues, and it, it did take up some time, but we, we think it's really important. There's three basic reasons why we think you should support and adopt this proposed amendment. First one is it's consistent with state law. I think the county is better served by having a code that mirrors state law, and in this case, typically, state law is providing restrictions, but in this case, we got restrictions, state law is allowing for state-recognized exceptions. Second issue is that it is consistent with sort of the original intent. That's what you decided in 2015. It was really just an idea to table that, to provide more time to consider that, that time clearly, and then some, has been allowed for, and I think, you know, we and other parties are in support, not aware of anybody in opposition. And third, it will provide for more development opportunities and economic growth in the county. These rural communities, obviously, you don't want to allow anything, but they, they have to have those commercial services, they have to have that development, and a 4,000-square-foot size limitation on commercial uses makes it really difficult to provide certain commercial services that are really important for those people living in that surrounding community. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but we just ask you to adopt that amendment.
Any questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for your time.
I actually have a question that's not, not of you. That's sort of related. So what about structures that might be multi-floor? I mean, do we allow two floors, three floors, four floors?
We would, yes, we would, but the state standard, the baseline 4,000, is per use, so it doesn't matter how many floors, it doesn't matter if the business has two buildings, it's still capped at 4,000, except if we add this exception.
Okay, great. All right, so now we'll close the public portion of this hearing, and is there any further discussion?
Well, clarifying question, or not a clarif, but with the planning commission, we've received no issues or opposition on any of the items before us today.
Correct. So the testimony at the planning commission, Mr. Connors spoke, and there were several other people there testifying in favor. There was no testimony in opposition, written testimony, just the one letter in support. We've heard no opposition from any of our CPOs. The planning commission voted, there were two abstentions. Nobody voted against. There were two abstentions. They did not really state on the record why, but it's my understanding, they just wanted more time. They would have liked to be able to review the packet till the next meeting, but the rest of the group was ready to move forward, so.
Okay. So did you want to pull that one, if you do make a motion, you might want to include?
Sort should the language be, remove the section? I think I wrote it down. Yeah, you had the one, it was under, under exceptions, right?
Correct, yeah, it's Section 90, 902. So you could just simply say the, the setback exemption for mechanical units, you know, removing the setback exemption for mechanical units in Section 902, or something like that. That's, I think, sufficient.
Yes. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So.
I'd say.
So I, I move to approve ZDO-266 with one, with one exception, removing Section 902 regarding mechanical units, and, and the balance of ZDO 266 as recommended by the planning commission and staff.
I'll second.
So normally, I would repeat that.
You don't need to.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve ZDO 266 with one exception. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? It has been, okay, hearing none. I'll call, oh, we already did the vote. I gotta turn the page. Thank you, Paul. Now that the amendments have been approved, I'll direct staff to draft an ordinance reflecting today's decision, including an agenda for this board's adoption at a future business meeting. With that, we'll close the hearing on ZDO 266. Thank you for your work.